Good evening, and welcome to public hearing number three on the millage rate of the Griffin Spalding County Schools Board of Education. Today is August 29th, 2023. Today's meeting is starting at 5:09 PM. We'll ask that the superintendent, please give us a roll call to see if we have quorum.
Sir, Mr. Chair, so we'll start with the ladies to my right, starting in District Five, Ms. Sue McDonald.
Present.
District Four, Barbara Jo Cook.
Here.
To my left, starting in District Two, Mr. Will Dos.
Here.
District Three, Mrs. Zachary Holmes.
Here.
District One, Chairman Brown.
Present. Thank you so much. We have a quorum. What is the pleasure of this body under item number two, adoption of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented, excluding any corrections or addendums.
Second. You've heard the motion to be made by Leader Holmes of the Third to accept the agenda as printed and any exclusions, and seconded by the Vice Chair, Mr. Dos. What is the pleasure of this body? When your district is called, please vote. District One, yes. District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Five zero, the agenda is adopted. Public hearing number three, millage rate. Please, we already have a number of people that have decided to sign up, but this time I want to call up our CFO, Mr. Byron Jones, to do our millage rate presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, public. Good to see you this evening. I think you said it earlier, Mr. Chairman, this is the third public hearing. The school boards are required by law to have three public hearings if they're not proposing to roll their millage rate back to the proposed, the full rollback rate, so here we are tonight. Our goal is to hear from the public this evening and then at 5:30 or a little after, give you a recommendation for the millage rate for FY '24, which is calendar year 2023, FY '24. So as we start our presentation, my goal again, as I always tell you, communicate effectively. I'm going to do my best to try to give you some nuggets, maybe to provide a little bit of clarity to the public. If they've heard the prior presentations or not, hopefully we can answer some things through this presentation that maybe they didn't come in here with that knowledge. Our focus area is over to the right, the acronym LEEDs. Our mission and vision, distinctive brand, strong leaders, great schools, and obviously our mission to empower each student to graduate college and career-ready. And we're a couple of years in now on our strategic plan, which guides all of this, should be guiding every decision that we make. It's called Roadmap to Success. We, most of the presentations that I talked to you about are on the bottom left, aligning resources to student and staff needs. And you read this diagram from bottom to top as everything impacts student learning. Wanted to just give you a brief reminder, schools are required to pass or adopt an official final budget by June 30th of each year. Most school districts in Georgia do that sometime in late June. Strategically, this year, we were trying to do that a month in advance, so on or about May 23rd, the board accepted the superintendent's recommendation, and we actually adopted for the first time our budget here in Griffin Spalding earlier than June, to my knowledge. So we're a couple of months after that now. I explained this in the public hearing last week, we have to wait till the assessment notices go out to the public, which I believe the assessor's office in Spalding County mailed those on or about June 2nd, 3rd, 5th, somewhere in that range. And then the public's allowed 45 days to appeal those, so after that has played out on the timeline, here we are in here today. That's a little bit for the reason of the delay between the budget being adopted and then our millage rate being proposed. And again, this little, little item on the background, and I hope everybody's got a PowerPoint that, in your hands to talk about this, the reassessment of property is really what our millage rate is based on, whether we roll it back or not, and there are some increases in Spalding County for the last couple of years that are causing the advertisement that we put in the newspaper to be a higher percentage maybe than the public's used to seeing, and I'll show you that slide here in just a second. We'd like to define some terms, adblocker tax, property tax, when you get your property tax bill, and again, you cannot get that property tax bill until the school board adopts a millage rate and then recommends that to the Spalding County Commissioners to ratify. And then any rates by the city of Griffin or Spalding County, all of that has to be sent to the state at one time, ratified by the state. That communication goes back to Ms. Hollums and the Tax Commissioner's Office, and then she will print the bills, then they'll go out to you, and then you got 60 days to pay it. So sometimes that's the reason there's a delay here in Spalding County of getting that. It may be after December or on or about before the tax bills will be due, but it's normally 60 days after you receive the bill. Two-thirds of the property tax bill, it is true, is normally school boards, that is true. So the millage rate, you can, you can go up to 20 meals here in the state of Georgia without legislative approval to go higher, and Griffin Spalding's currently 16.742. Certified tax digest, that's just the digest that I was just explaining, has to go to Atlanta to be certified for the taxing authorities here in Georgia. Living authority, Griffin Spalding School System, again, will, will adopt a rate and then recommend that to the county commissioners. The value of one meal here in Spalding County is 2.3 million, and that is up from the prior year. I'll show you a slide on that in just a second. Millage rate, we, you commonly hear me talking about fiscal year, so fiscal year '24 is the budget year we just began. The rollback rate we're talking about here is calendar year '23 because you pay your taxes in the '23 calendar year. Millage equivalent, you'll hear me talk about this a little more in just a second. When the assessment notices and the information came to the school board, we had to advertise that it would be a 15% increase of, of school taxes, and you, you have to advertise that by law. If you do not roll your rate back to bring in basically the same amount of revenue in the prior year. Counties will always get new growth, so anybody that's building a new building or a new house, residential property on unimproved land, we will always get that growth regardless. But the rollback rate is, is based specifically on the amount of assessment increases and whether or not everybody in the county's been assessed or not, I don't have that answer. I've explained to you before, there used to be a rule in the state, probably 10 to 12 years ago, there was a 3% cap for a multiple year, year, time that, that taxing entities couldn't go up any higher than that. And that has not been the case for many years now. So net assessed value is basically the same, what I was telling you earlier, 2.3 million is the value of one meal. If you take that 2.3 million, multiply it times 16.7, that'll give you approximately the amount of money that the school board would be bringing in based on their millage rate for the current year. Again, you are the recommending authority. Rollback rate, again, 16.742, and the, the calculation does stipulate that the school board could roll the rate back to 14.551, which is a 2.191 decrease, and in the paper, that's what we had to advertise that at. So that's the, that's the difference in the assessment amounts when you multiply that out by everybody in the county. The five-year digest is a little bit different type of document, and I'm going to focus on the far right-hand column, bottom number, bottom right, 18.3%. So what we had to advertise in the paper was a 15% increase, that again is based only on reassessed existing property. The 18% is when you look at new growth, and it means that you actually would receive that plus the assessments, and so that's the total amount Spald, Griffin Spalding would receive, 39.2 million, which is a $6 million increase. As a reminder, two and a half percent of that number is reduced based on we are, we pay the Tax Commissioner's Office two and a half percent of all collected monies for them to send out your tax bills, collect your money, and then remit it to us one to two times a month. So we do have to remove that, so the total amount of that six million is roughly five million that the school board would get. Then on top of that, if we have delinquencies or a payment plan that the taxpayers worked out, we would, might not, would get that money in, in a particular calendar year. This next form, if, when the roll, when the rate is adopted this evening, this is, these next three slides are actually one form that the superintendent will be required to sign that we have to give to Ms. Hollums. And it just lets the public see, there's a, there's a calculation here, and that, and you have this on the slides, it tells what the prior year amount of assessment value is to the left. Amount of assessment increases, $307 million. In the middle column over to the right, it tells you that new number, and where the millage rate is still staying the same. The middle slide kind of gives you the calculation that I had to run in the newspaper that showed you on the bottom right, 15.06%. And again, this form is provided to me by the Tax Commissioner's Office, they have verified that these figures are correct. And then the bottom part is simply the certification superintendent's signature. So again, that will be presented to you after the 5:30 meeting. We'd like to give you some millage rate 10-year trend data. I've shared with you guys over the last three years, I didn't even realize before I came to Spalding that the rate was as high as 19.47 in Spalding County at one time. The next slide, I'll show you some surrounding counties that are higher than that, so you can see over the last 10 years where it has progressed downward. This would be the fourth year in a row if adopted at 16.742. Again, this is 2022 millage rate data, so there are a few counties around us that, that maybe have already adopted their 2023 rate, I just don't have that data yet, this is what the state could provide us. We did include all of our counties that are in our RESA, Griffin RESA group, so again, you can see some of them, they are lower than Spalding County, they may have different needs, et cetera. There are some that are higher. Henry, we have a lot of employees that live in Henry that, that drive in, just like Fayette, and they drive in, both of those are higher than Spalding County. I will make a comment about Fayette. Fayette's at 19.15, and in addition to that, they have a separate millage rate for bonds. So in Fayette County, you pay 19.15, you pay .85 millage, two millage rates for school, and then you have the East Plots, it's three different taxing rates for the, for school purposes there. You can see Rockdale is actually higher, Muskogee down in Columbus is actually higher than the, the 20. They have legislative approval to do that. I don't know their particular situation, but they are actually higher than what the normal taxing school board rate is in Georgia. This next slide is just to give you a little bit of a, a value comparison, $100,000 house on the left. If we leave the rate the same, the taxes for school should be 669. If we roll it back to 14.551, the taxes would go down 8764, and that's what we put in the newspaper, so it's, it is accurate. We have to advertise that as a tax increase, but you actually wouldn't pay any more taxes than you did the prior year, it's just you would receive a decrease in taxes. But it is a net tax increase, the school board would get more money if we leave the rate the same, but that's, that's where those values come for, same, come from, same on the right-hand side with a $200,000 house. You can see what those values would produce, so taxes on $200,000 will go down $175. This slide is similar to the, the previous one, but it looks at a reassessment of a house. So again, on the left, the $87 is your base value of 100, and if you're reassessed with a $30,000 increase, it's going to go up $113. Part of that is, is relative to just the rollback piece, and part of that is the assessment going straight up $30,000. So again, that, I know I don't expect everybody to understand that, but there's some, you know, it lets you see a little bit about the decrease in the race, what, what it would equate to. The next couple is just straight out of the newspaper. I highlighted the, the rates that I felt like the public would pay attention to if they saw an article, so 15.06%. Again, we kind of showed you the form that was derived to get that. We have a, we have had our three public hearings, this was the first article, August 15th, advertising that. And then the one that ran last week, which was specifically just for this public hearing, same article. Again, we have to have this article published seven days prior to having a public meeting. This is all, has to be on our website as well. I said this to you last time, and I was kind of grinning about it. Adam Pugh, again, deserves a lot of credit, he, he helped me craft this press release to the Griffin Daily News that we hope had an impact with the public. They did not run this press release in the same paper as the August 15th, I think they ran it in Thursday on August the 17th, maybe. But, you know, hopefully it let the public know that the rate is not being proposed to, to raise. It talks a little bit about assessed values, it talks about surrounding counties down in, in the article that I had just showed on a prior slide, some of that's not on this slide, but it showed some of the surrounding ones, and, and we didn't get as many questions on that that came into my office. So Adam, again, as I said last week, I appreciate you for that. And then our timeline board, I crossed out some of these items so you could see where we're at tonight, August 29th. We'll conclude this public hearing and give you a recommendation for a millage rate adoption. Then on August 30th tomorrow, I will communicate the decision to the county manager, and then it will be in a holding mode until they can ratify that. Tax Commissioner has a deadline, they're supposed to go to the state, and my assumption is she'll ask for an extension for that. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. We do have a couple people signed up for public hearings. I'm going to read to you the guidelines for our public comments. Board policy, BCBI Guidelines for Public Comments, any individual desiring to speak is requested to give his or her name, address, and group, if any, that he or she is presenting. Speaker is expected to address the board and not the audience. Presentation should be as brief as possible, yet should include all information considered important by the speaker. Unless an extension of time is granted, each speaker shall not exceed three minutes. Questions, suggestions, proposals, or criticisms, which have been presented verbally, should also be submitted when practical in writing, and should be signed by the individual or the spokesperson of the group appearing before the board. Persons appearing before the board is reminded as a point of information that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. No profane or vulgar language or personal abuse against any person will be permitted. The board vests in its chairperson or any other presiding officer authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who does not adhere to the above protocols. Alrighty, so item four on the agenda, public comments, want to call up Ms. Judy Strahan.
Thank you for having me. I'm Judy Strahan. I'm at 78 Cedar Ridge Airport Road in Griffin.
Hold on one second. Can we adjust her microphone for her, please? Mr. Dos, okay, got it.
Not used to all this fancy stuff. I appreciate you doing the presentation on what the millage and everything was going to be used for. But I guess one of the main concerns I had, did you go through your current budget and look and see where things could be cut? My husband and I are on social security, and we live off our savings, that's all we have, we have no pension or anything. And we would appreciate if our dollars were spent wisely, because we have no children in the school system. My daughter has three, three children that are grandchildren, they're all homeschooled. Our main concern is, is yes, you have the same millage rate for the last two years, but as you say, the value of our houses have gone up. We alone paid an extra 13%, but we didn't have anywhere to go for that 13%. We had to cut back on other things that we do, and, you know, food has gone up, fuel has gone up, everything's more expensive. The people are hurting. I think there would be more people here, except the kids, you know, that go to school, they have baseball and dance and soccer and all that kind of stuff, and their parents are busy. I get that, but I, I think they would not want this either, given the situation everyone's going through right now with all the costs going up. I just think this is a really bad time. I also think we need to, as a school, you would get more people in the public school system if you concentrated on teaching these kids how to read, write, and do math, and do it well. And I realize there's some discipline problems, but part of that's just the culture we live in, and maybe if they could get a good grounding at school, they would bring that home. I, I know it's, it's a hard, hard situation, but anyways, I think there's places in the budget that can be cut because it seems like only about 54% is spent on actual instruction to the students. That means there's a lot of the budget that's spent on overhead, extracurricular activities, and I'm sure they're all important, but are they all really necessary? Probably not. I know when I went through our budget- I know when I went through our budget, when we had so many bills coming in, I had to sit down and decide, do we really need this, or can we maybe do with less here? Maybe when we're running errands, do four or five things at one time instead of just doing one at a time to cut the gas costs. And I wish we could see more of that in government, because quite frankly, people can't continue to pay these high prices. I know you feel like these things need to be done, but we all are going to have to learn to do with less because things are getting so expensive, and you can only squeeze so much blood from a tourniquet. (laughing) Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your comments, Mrs. Strahan. Next up for public comments, we have Ms. Kay Wimpy.
Hi, I'm Kay Wimpy. I live at 164 South Walkers Mill Road, Griffin, Georgia. I'm going to just say, school money is not your money, the tax money. It's the taxpayer's money, and it's your fiduciary responsibility to spend that on the education of our children. Spending does not need to be frivolous. I'd like to know what the justification is when you go back and you look at the history of the tax digest. In the last two years, we have done an 11.438% increase in the budget for the school system. The previous three years was 1%, 1%, and 1.860. So why such a major jump? The board needs to look at, is the administration of this school is top-heavy in administration positions. We need to reduce contract positions that the school is using. We need to reduce the need for five assistant superintendents or use them to utilize support services for teachers instead of doing contract services. Households have already experienced a 40% increase in groceries, a 40% increase in gas, and are just trying to maintain from one paycheck to the other paycheck. So as I said, you can't get blood from a tourniquet, and people are now starting to lose their homes because they can't afford their taxes along with everything else. We're already seeing our tax values have increased on our homes, so without raising your taxes or even doing a rollback, you can maintain the same budget that you had last year. I am also going to reiterate what the previous speaker just said. The school system needs to get a handle on the discipline in the school system. Children who are there to learn can't learn because of the discipline problems in the school. Teachers are running down the halls because they're having to break up fights. You've got one school already in this system who had nine fights last week, three of them on Friday. Today, they had three more fights, and teachers are having to try to maintain that. You also need to look at teachers, some of, I'm not going to say all of them, because there are some great teachers, but you have some teachers who are reading from a script because there's so much chaos in their room, and the children who want to learn. And once that script's read, there's no answering questions. Let's get back to teaching, but you've got to also look at this budget and how you can reel in spending, like every household that's here is having to reel in their own spending and making decisions on what they can buy, can't buy, and what they need to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wimpy, for your comments to the public hearing for the Milage Rate. That seems to close the public hearing at this moment. Item five, there is no need or purpose for executive session, and we are set for adjournment for the 5 o'clock public hearing. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the adjournment of this public meeting?
A motion that we adjourn at this time and prepare for the 5:30 meeting.
Second. It's been properly moved by Mr. Holmes of the Third to adjourn, seconded by the Vice Chair, Mr. Will Dos. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. When your district is called, please vote. District One, yes. District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Five zero, this meeting is...